America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, in liberty and justice for all.
We have a report of the bid opening on a water storage tank.
Do you mean to read this?
Yes, please.
I opened the bids at 3:00 PM on Thursday, February 28, 2002, at Halsted Hall with following people present: John Carr from Tisdale Associates; Gary Malinsky, chief water plant operator; Ronald J. Nikotoffman, representing CBNI Water; and Bill Herzog, representing Landmark. Attorney Justin Herzog was the official representative for Landmark, but Bill was representing his brother. Bob Clark, Mayor Rivers, and trustee Penfield arrived late, but in time to discuss the opening with John Carr. Two bids were received in timely manner from CBNI and Landmark. Caldwell Tank bid was delivered by FedEx at 3:20 PM, therefore we refuse the bid's topic. The bids are as follows. CBNI Constructors, the total base bid $2,089, 1.5 fluted tank.
That's $89,000.
Oh, eight, no, million, huh?
No.
$2,089,000. $2,089,000. The 1.5 fluted tank, $1,747,000. The tank lettering, $4,500. I kind of hesitate to read this because I think it's confusing, but delete salt remover, $96,000. Additional steel piling, $60. The 2,000 gallon composite tank, $2,089,000. The 1.5 million composite tank, $1,849,000. Landmark Structures did not bid a total base bid or alternate 1. Alternate 2, tank lettering, $4,000. Alternate 3, delete salt remover, $3,500. Alternate 4, no bid. Alternate 5, no bid. Alternate 6, which is a 2,000 gallon composite tank, $2,041,000. And 1.5 million composite tank, $1,744,100. These have been turned over to Mr. Carr for his report to the board.
I don't believe we could give any options tonight that are here from Tisdale Associates. Unless the board wants to have a discussion on it. Okay. Comments from the public at this time? Go ahead, Paul. I'll let Paul go first here tonight, so if you need...
Actually, thank you, Ms. May. You let me go first because you know it's almost past nine at that time. A few subjects. One, I'm glad to see a fire department represented here. FEMA has opened another round of branch firefighting equipment, again, both categories, one of which is vehicle acquisition. Carmers has appropriated $360 million for this. Last year, we applied for $300,000, or $270,000, because with our population and the way the rules of this grant system works, a village with a population of less than 50,000 only has to put up 10% of the cost of the vehicle. The key features this year are age of the equipment to be replaced, number of miles on it, and I know this is the second engine in this particular truck we're talking about if we're still talking about 302.
350.
350.
In any case, I need data before, on and before, within the next five to 10 days because the grant period is only from March 1st to April 1st. It's only a month. However, there's no paperwork truly involved in this. It's going to be a completely online deal, and unless you people have some strong objections to this, I will work with them. Fire Department get the appropriate numbers. There is an administrative fee. We are allowed to charge, I believe it's 3% of the total grant for the cost of administering it, which, that's me. If we get it, we get it. If we don't, we don't, but at least we're trying. The key things that they're looking for this year, as I said, are age of the vehicle, mileage, and, well, we've got actually a really added benefit. Last year, we pointed out the fact that we are the northeastern most corner. We provide mutual aid services both of Vermont, Canada, and west of here. Now, we can also interject the fact that we are also a border town, and with the planned upgrades at Fort Champlain, as well as the local issues that we have here with border crossings, that it becomes an even more important thing to replace this vehicle. So, I will use the appropriate words to say the right things and submit the application. It will be done before April 1st. My only need is communication with the fire department.
Yes, sir.
Well, maybe I would suggest that you remove the fire committee in those meetings. So, because one of the big problems we've had getting this thing going is everybody knowing what's going on.
I don't mind. I'll tell you what.
You know, either way, or so.
I'm a little old grant writer. You guys call me when you want to talk, okay? You get together as many people as you want to do it, but I need the facts. I cannot work.
Could you consider that because ARIST is going to raise up the amount of people working here this year, that maybe we could raise our numbers up a little bit, too?
I haven't picked a number. That's why I was just talking with Bruce before. I mean, last year, you went for 270. There is no limit as to how much you ask for. Obviously, if you ask for a half a million dollars, they're going to say, "What are you looking for, Rolls-Royce, or what?" You've got to be within a certain realms of practicality.
Yeah. How many did you go for, about 100?
Well, the thought I had in mind, again, this is just only a suggestion, and it's a very good idea, I think, your fire liaison, your fire chief, and the people that are going to be involved in these issues should get together and then let me know the data that I need. All right? And once that is given to me, I will do the application. I will use my email return address because they need a contact that they can talk to in case there's any questions on the grant application, unless you want me to put the go to this. It's up to you people. I can operate on your computers on my own.
That's fine. No problem.
Okay? That's issue number one. And same, we have a representative. I'll let you guys call me. You know my number and give me a buzz when you get the information. I don't know. Today is the 4th, and I'd really like to stop worrying about this no later than the 15th. I'd like to go hit that send button by then.
Is that possible, Bruce? Is that workable?
Oh, yes, I can have it in a couple of days. We expect the truck to come in just about the way it did last time because of the increased cost, the cost of...
5%.
And we've cut some things, but they're going to balance off. It's going to be 310,000.
I don't feel that's an... You know, the villagers' position in it. Oh, by the way, budget officer, please alert yourself to this. You've got to commit at least 10%. Let's assume that we asked for a grant of $320,000, $320,000, let's say just for pocket purposes. You really, the villagers, better have cash, not in kind, but cash, $32,000.
That's where the truck is delivered. Where the truck is delivered.
Where the truck is delivered, yeah. But I mean, it's going to be in your budget somewhere.
We're also on tap for $150,000 of low interest loans from the state of New York fires. We're still in that cap, in that... We applied more last year. They had no funds, so they are holding the applications to this year.
Well, we applied last year, as did Champlain. Champlain, at least, have $45,000. We've got to thank you, which is not unusual. Very seldom do you get anything on your first application. However, the fact that you didn't get something on the first round puts you in a much better position for this round. And the rules seem to be a bit more liberal, and there are good key elements, and I can assure you, I know how to put the words to make those elements look important, more important than they. You know, I guess you could call them buzzwords they like to hear, and we've got plenty of them in this part of the world. That's project number one. Okay. The next thing is project number two. I have informally, and now I am formally requesting some pressure from our chief executive, Empire State Development Corporation. They are in receipt of our request for reimbursement at the tune of approximately $76,000 for what we put up front for the bathrooms and the docks and everything else we spent to date. Their basic excuse is we are four to six weeks behind in printing checks because they were given the task of funding and distributing money for all the people or whatever they had to do based on 9/11, the lower credit center. They were there literally handing out $100,000 checks. At this point in time, I'm advised that their check writing capability is swamped. We have made the appropriate adjustments, and they have our direct deposit number. I was promised a month ago that we would have a direct deposit, and you have my assurances that the person that I deal with, Chris Florrie, the project manager for Empire State Development Corporation, has been receiving telephone calls twice a week, as late as 3 o'clock this afternoon. I was promised I will have the information for you before the board meeting. Obviously, I don't have it. So, I'm asking for some assistance. If anybody on the board, including anybody, knows somebody, I think Kevin Mullins can help us the last time, but I don't know if he's still on that same job. If not, I would suggest us Mr. George Stafford, who is the new Secretary of State's right-hand man. Okay? Need some pressure applied to them. Also, they are holding up the request for rephasing of the project, which basically what we said, okay, we've done all the preliminaries, now we've got to do some real engineering, and we need to take some funds from the big chunk and put it into additional engineering. They reviewed and reviewed and reviewed all our proposals. Verbally, they have said yes, but they need somebody, apparently somebody running around here without a pen because they can't sign off on it yet. But I think a simple phone call to the right source will get the signature on the paper, and we'll be moving forward again. New engineer subject. After reviewing all the requests for qualifications that came in the first roll round, first of all, I think you're all aware of the fact that Northwoods Engineering, the feasibility study and led us to the stage we're at here, has asked not to be considered for the remainder of the project. I agree with it. It's a parting, a friendly parting. After checking with local, the people that had submitted qualifications in the past and checking locally, I guess AEDA, Andy Abdallah's outfit from Plattsburgh is doing, as I understand, a quite pretty good job on senior housing. So, I sought them out, and we have negotiated, or I say negotiated, they've offered a contract of $24,000, which means they obviously know that if you go above $24,000, you have to go out for bid, and we can do it for $24,000. They are prepared to guide us and lead us and design us through the remainder of the project. We've already made some major gains. We've had some preliminary meetings with them, and some of the issues that were iffy in the past have changed around. One of the things that has happened, although it's causing problems in another area, the Army Corps of Engineers lady is no longer employed by them. She was asked to leave for causing too many problems and changing her mind too many times. Bottom line is, she isn't there anymore, and Mr. Abdallah Senior, Andy, after reviewing our plans, looking at the old state dock and the like, said, "Hey, wait a minute. You don't really have to go out for a major permit for this." He called it EC, and EC agreed. The docks are in existence. We can fall underneath what's called repair and maintenance. So, therefore, we fall under what's known as a national permit, and we don't have to do a whole bunch of the paperwork, and we can do a lot of different things. It puts us back in the sheet pile business, and we'll just fall. Some positive things are happening there, but there again, I'm at a standstill right now because I do not want to proceed until we've gotten written an authorization to go with the new engineering company, and I do not also want to spend one more penny until they reimburse what we've already spent. And I've reached the limit of my ability to squeeze without getting nasty, so you don't want me to get nasty. I've got another issue I'm working on for another local business, and unfortunately, I'm getting the same song and dance from the Corps of Engineers when you call and ask for a specific individual. "Oh, yeah, I see. Hold on a minute." And then when they find out who's calling, "Oh, I just had to go to a meeting." That man must be in either meetings or traveling around the world continuously. That's the Corps of Engineers. But in any case, that's not for you guys to worry about. That's for me to worry about. Unless you have some strong objections, I would like to... I have a copy, and I will leave it. I'll leave a couple of copies, actually. For board record, for village record and board review, this is the contract, proposed contract from Architects and Randy Abdallah's outfit. We have not signed it. I've sent, I'm sending two copies to ESDC for pre-approval, so that when they finally do get off the plot, we'll be able to... We won't have to go another month of waiting for them to approve the engineering company itself.
Do we run it by our attorney also?
Yeah, sure, if you want.
Doug, have you had any dealings with these guys in Plattsburgh, Abdallah's?
Yes.
Are they pretty happy with it?
Yeah. They're, you know, average.
Well, they've built most of the stuff around here. Your casting plant on Route 11. In fact, local printer is making up the brochure. That's why I know all the buildings they've designed. They're pretty reputable, and not, they're not a schlock outfit, let's put it that way. Just the meetings that we've had, the preliminary conversational meetings to date, have been very, very impressed by the sincerity, their knowledge, their understanding, and their working relationship. This is going to be a bit different than the last one. Actually, it's going to be really nice. They're going to do the work instead of me. I'm the local one of it anyways. I mean, I will still be monitoring all of it, but I mean, I don't know if the board is fully aware, but many of the things that happen engineering-wise and documentation-wise and otherwise, on, to get us to where we're at now, if personally I had not followed them up and created the paperwork myself, I wouldn't have... That's one of the reasons why I was not unhappy to see the other outfit fall out. But they have been paid. They're happy and satisfied, and so are we. So, we've got a good feasibility study, and we've got a good preliminary on. And Abdallah's suggestions to date have been absolutely very, very good. Other than that, I think unless you guys have questions, I don't know who they're going to replace the Corps of Engineers person with, but hopefully that'll be resolved. Now, unfortunately, her attitude of changing her procedures every other week was a long downfall. I heard she ran afoul of some major businessman in Plattsburgh, etc. Now, after three changes, he says enough is enough, and that was the end of that.
Any questions for Paul? Thanks, Paul. You need a motion for us to approve signing contract with Abdallah?
I'm not prepared to sign it, and I can't believe ESDC says so.
We can wait.
So, I'm going to leave a copy with Burke, and I'm going to leave three copies.
Do we need...
Two for the village office, one to Reed, one to your file, one that Carol already knows about that she's going to make a copy of, and send two copies to the ESDC tomorrow.
I don't think we need a motion applied for that. Maybe we should.
Ask Matt if you don't think, if you're not sure.
Yeah. Yeah, just make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Paul to go out for the wire equipment, for the grant.
Yeah, I'd like to second that.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have one piece of correspondence, and that's from Plattsburgh North Country Chamber of Commerce. It's regarding a class they're going to have. It's called Understanding New York State Unemployment System. I'm not sure if anybody is interested in going. It's March 12, 8:30 till 10:30, and it's at the chamber office in Plattsburgh. We do have to tell them soon if we want to go because seating is very limited. It would be $5.
Are you interested in that?
No, it wouldn't be me. It would be someone out of our ZENS office if he's interested. I do have one other thing that I would like to bring up, and this was just handed to me. Our accounting department had previously shown interest in attending a seminar regarding submitting the monthly retirement internet report, and they were unable to attend because the conference was not very close. Now, they're going to have one at Northeastern Clinton. It certainly isn't going to get any closer than that.
No.
That's going to be Tuesday, March 19, at 10:30 in the morning. Arsen would like permission for he and Mary to attend this.
I need a motion that we...
There's no cost. No cost.
Send the quarter of the W, quarter of the meeting.
Hey, you're mine. Hey, you're mine. Sounds like... Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have one piece of correspondence, and that's from Plattsburgh North Country Chamber of Commerce. It's regarding a class they're going to have. It's called Understanding New York State Unemployment System. I'm not sure if anybody is interested in going. It's March 12, 8:30 till 10:30, and it's at the chamber office in Plattsburgh. We do have to tell them soon if we want to go because seating is very limited. It would be $5.
Are you interested in that?
No, it wouldn't be me. It would be someone out of our ZENS office if he's interested. I do have one other thing that I would like to bring up, and this was just handed to Our accounting department had previously shown interest in attending a seminar regarding submitting the monthly retirement internet report, and they were unable to attend because the conference was not very close. Now, they're going to have one at Northeastern Clinton. It certainly isn't going to get any closer than that.
No.
That's going to be Tuesday, March 19, at 10:30 in the morning. Arsen would like permission for he and Mary to attend this.
I need a motion that we...
There's no cost. No cost.
No cost? Send the quarter of the W, quarter of the meeting.
Hey, you're mine. Hey, you're mine. Sounds like... Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That's it, Beth?
That's all I have.
Report of mayor and trustees. I want to report that this time on the winter legislative meeting, the meeting was held 24th to 26th at the Albiac Round Plaza, and Sunday night, they had general budget overview and open discussion, and it wasn't too much of that. But the next morning, we had a full day with the executive chamber and legislative leaders, and the governor's proposed budget was good news. There's going to be no cuts in the governor's budget to Renu Sherry, to localities, which got a nice loud reception, and also, there will be no cuts in chips. So, with that in mind, the mayor's conference, I guess, proposed that they weren't going to ask for any increase. And then when we got to the legislative part of the session, we were addressed by the Speaker of the Assembly, Sheldon Silvers, and the Senate Majority Leader, Joe Bruno. And we started right out with the speaker giving off how the assembly has always done this and that and the other thing, and of course, the Senate does the same thing. It's very... One of the questions proposed to the assembly is that one of the major requests conference of mayors every year is Wick's Law reform. If you're not aware of what Wick's Law does, it adds to the cost of doing business when you have a contract over X number of dollars. You have to pay prevailing union wage. In other words, a non-union contractor can't bid on it, or if he does, he has to pay. So, drives the cost of a contract up. The governor proposed this year some mandate relief in there by raising the thresholds. Some mayor from Long Island got up and addressed the speaker and said, "For years and years, the Senate has passed that bill. The assembly refuses to act on it. Seeing that we're not asking for any money or anything this year, why can't the assembly give us the mandate relief that we need?" And the speaker politely told him he would take it under advisement at that point. He politely got booed. In the afternoon, we have a talk with Secretary of State, Rodney Daniels, and had a chance to talk with him personally. And the only thing he told me, Ross's point, my favorite waterfront project, and you will be hearing from us, that's all I can tell you, because he told me that right in front of everybody right there, so... I guess we could take it as good news.
Not bad.
Not bad. And then I did, I did meet with, Tuesday, I met with Senator Stafford's office at Chris Arloft, and we discussed the very same subjects that we talked about. We know the Senate's going to pass it. You know, like Chris says, the assembly, probably won't get off the floor. I don't know if that's on the report, but looks good so far with the governor's budget. And that's it for that. My next item is a trip that we took to Dallas, Texas. I think I can speak for everybody involved. It was a very fruitful trip, a very, very busy trip. We, I think, toured seven different tanks. We actually saw construction of a composite tank, the concrete part, the steel part. We went to finish tanks. I was impressed. I think Bobby was impressed with the workmanship and how they did business. The old thing, when we left there, they said it would be competitive, and apparently it been obvious, they are competitive. The only thing I tell you is they did keep us busy. We didn't have time to do too much of anything. I, like I say, that one tank with the village offices, it was really something to see, elevator and everything inside of a tank, a water tank. I don't think we want to go quite that far. Bob, do you want to add anything to it?
No.
And I would like to request an executive session for the acquisition of real property, and that's not yours, this is mine. So, ladies... Cut. Second. We'll call vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hattrell.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign. And that's it for me. Trustee Menard.
My first item on the agenda is a discussion of the fire contract. Received a notice today from Tom Renee on the fire contract, and basically, he didn't have any objections to us agreeing with the contract. He had a few language recommendations, I guess, but he said that he had no problem with us signing his contract at this time. Being so late in the year, I would like to make a motion that we do sign the fire contract with the fire district in Champlain.
Motion made, seconded. Any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
And my second item is to also make a motion to request an executive session for the proposed acquisition of real property.
Second. Motion made, seconded. We'll call a vote. Trustee Menard.
Aye.
Trustee Hattrell.
Aye.
Trustee Penfield.
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson.
Aye.
And the mayor will sign.
And that's all I have for you.
Thank you, Trustee Menard. Trustee Hattrell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have a two-page work report for the water plant. They've been busy. Also, it appears that there is a problem with one pump. Bob, can you update us a little bit? All I know is that it's not working very plucky.
What happened was, we put the new drive on, and it's an old pump. You know, it's 17 years old, and I think the drive is a little bit more than pump to handle, and the rest of the bells are wore. So, rather than taking it apart and try to spend money on something that you can't fix, we're going to get a new pump. And Gary has ordered it. It's like about $3,000 you can't play with at the last... dollars, you can't play with it for less, you know?
How long, Bob?
Uh, Gary told me it was three-week delivery, so, and it's, a week's gone by now, so another two weeks and we'll be back online.
Then what is that, the pump going longer?
Yeah, well, you know, you, you still, your other pumps are working, it's a, you know, it's a two-day job, once we get the pump here, you know, I'll put my crew on there and we'll, we'll change it out. All the hard work's already done on it, so, yes.
Thank you. Doug, any updates?
Just that last week, I was in Washington, D.C. at the Zebra Musa Conference, and did all I could to put us in a good position to get a free sparkler when they come out for the next generation. We found three potential funding sources. We knew of two of them before we went there, the EPA and Army Corps of Engineers, but we tagged along with an outfit called the Electrical Power Research Institute, EPRI, out of California, and they might have some money for us also.
Thank you, Doug.
That's all we're doing.
Then your trustee Hoprow, trustee Penfield.
I have nothing to report.
Thank you, trustee Penfield. Trustee Jefferson.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to make a motion to, for the authorization of the clerk to publish legal notice to go to bid for the sledgery rule.
Second, clerk. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Okay, and you have a copy of the monthly work report from Tommy Reed? And I have one other thing to report, we're working on the WiF ARIS certificate industrial user permit, draft should be completed next week. It's a quiet week, that's all I have to report.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Dan?
Um, no, I don't have any reports.
Arsen?
I'd like to request a budget meeting for Wednesday, March sixth, at three-thirty P.M., upstairs at the Village Office.
Need a motion that affect?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Excuse me. Is that it?
It was three-thirty, right?
Yes.
That's it?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes, I had a call at quarter to four today from H M T, the people are working on our transformers, and they wanna come up on the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh to finish their work. And I got a call into ARIS, I talked to Gary Leach, and he can't give me a answer until Monday morning because we need to shift the yard around. There will be, there will be four or five outages, they'll be very short, but there will be four or five outages, in and out. Mostly the people on the south end of town, not the north end of town, that transformer's already been done. But it will be on the twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh. If everything works out with ARIS, ARIS wants to shut down on the twenty-eighth, so I'm gonna have to bring some people in to drop them off, just so you know.
The twenty-eighth or the twenty-ninth, Good Friday?
Good Friday, twenty-eighth.
Twenty-ninth, Good Friday.
Was it twenty-ninth? I got my date screwed up then. Then it'll be twenty-sixth, then it's on the twenty-eighth.
If you wanna take it for the Passover, that's fine.
Twenty-sixth and the seventh, please.
Yeah, okay, the twenty-ninth is, is Good Friday, and they're gonna, they wanna shut down because they're gonna do some maintenance in their plant. And that's it on that one, so you'll know what's going on.
When soon as you confirm that with ARIS, can we get a notice out in the paper?
Yeah, I will, after Monday, I, I should know by Monday noon, because soon as I do, I'll have Carol get it in the paper.
Thank you.
Okay, then I'll be done.
That it?
No, I got one other thing. In all your conversations tonight, I was listening to you people talking about doing this waterfront revitalization, and you're gonna hire another engineering outfit. You know, engineers are, I guess, for the village here are a dime a dozen, I don't know what the hell goes on. You got a man sitting here that's working for us now, why aren't we gonna go out and hire another engineering outfit? And you got a guy on board that probably can do it too, you know? Did anybody ever think about asking Doug if he could do this, you know?
I don't know, did he? Didn't Paul ask you?
No, but I didn't approach him either, so.
But I know, that ain't the idea. You're working for us, I mean, we're paying you to work for us. We should be looking to say, we wanna save money on this thing, we should be looking, is this part of something we could work in with him?
I, I don't know that. I, I don't know how all this branch stuff works.
I mean, it's just, I don't know.
Bobby, I can't answer that question, I don't know. But that's all I know is that we were told upfront when we got this grant that we had to hire a...
Disadvantaged business enterprise. Or M V W.
People that hired minority groups, stuff like that, and that's why Northwood was hired. But since then, they, they don't wanna, they don't wanna continue that project. That actually does not come out of Village Dollar, you know that.
No, I know that, I, I realize that, I do, but just, sometimes I just wonder how these things work.
I can't answer, I wish I could, but I can't. Figured Doug had too much on his plate this year. I don't know, good question, though, and maybe we should pursue that, we, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else, Bob?
Nothing, except for me.
Bob?
Nothing, Doug.
Doug?
I just have to finish Bobby's Substation Foundations before I start on the state doc.
Okay.
I don't think I'll do that.
I'll close it.
I need a couple weeks, a couple weeks.
Board meeting up the public at this time. Nobody wish to do it, we're ready for recess.
Motion for recess.
Seven thirty-two. That's made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?